City Clerk, could I read off of items, please?
Okay, excuse me. Number one, conference with real property negotiator. Negotiating parties, City Manager Ted Anderson and Jerry Wookiee. Instructions to negotiator regarding price and terms. Number two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two potential cases. Number three, conference with labor negotiator. Agency negotiator Kurt Campion, Employee Organization's Galt Public Service Unit. Number four, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator Ted Anderson, Employee Organization Unrepresented Employees. And number five, public employee performance evaluation, City Manager.
Okay, we didn't finish those items, so we'll reconvene. Is there any statement you want to give, Steve?
Um, Mayor, there's no reportable action under items C1, C3, and C4, and the council's going to reconvene at the end of the meeting on item C2 and C5.
Thank you. Now, we'll call the regular council meeting to order at, what is it, 7:07, it looks like? Have the roll call, please.
Councilwoman Payne, here. Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
And I ask everyone to rise for a silent prayer. Remain standing for the flag salute presented by the Cub Scout PAC 84, Den 2. Go ahead.
Color card ad-. Clear card post colors. Please, children, the pledge of allegiance to the flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the free, liberty, and justice for all. Two. Color card dismissed.
Thank you, Scouts. And we will now have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetricable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.ci.galt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay. Agenda approval additions and or deletions, are there any?
Mr. Mayor, there's been a request to pull item D10-
D10?
-to a future meeting.
Okay.
Um, I would like to pull item L1. There were some issues with our recruitment. Um, it has nothing to do with any of the people that applied, and we will certainly bring it back, um, hopefully at the next meeting.
Okay. I'd like to pull item D8. D8? D8. C8.
And Mayor, I would ask the council to allow me to pull my item under my comments, uh, local preference, uh, forward, uh, because we do have some people here that wish to speak to that item.
Okay, you want to pull that into, under presentations as a recommendation, or?
That would be fine.
Okay. Now, we'll have the... Do you hear the consent?
Yes.
Make sure you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. Now, we'll have, you said you had no speakers? No speakers, public records?
I do have speaker sheets.
Okay. Have a comment?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. For requests that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, a community of character, and I want to compliment the city. I don't know who's responsible for this, but, uh, it shows that you're moving forward in modern times. You now have Skype on your website, and I am really thrilled to see something like that. It's the next process forward. I don't know if you have the webcam on it. I don't know who's responsible for it. Who was, Jason? Nope, does anybody take any responsibility for doing something good?
Um, uh, our IT Coordinator, Matt Marcott, is responsible for the, the update and maintenance.
Well, I, I think it's great, and even Daryl could use it if he had to, you know? If he had a webcam, we could watch him on the screen, maybe, you never know. But I think it's a step forward, it's a positive step, and I think you're going into the future, the 21st century, and I want to see more, more, more. We need change, 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 right? So, anyway, it's, uh, it was nice to see you, and I wanted to compliment you on that. I, I, when I was floored when I saw that thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
John Slaughterback?
Well, while he's coming up, Al, I just wanted to let you know I'm in Washington, DC, and I can see you in your brown jacket there, so.
Uh, Mr. Slaughterback, is he here? Maybe, oh, there's, um...
John Slaughterback. I live in the sly city of Galt. I've got a few things to say. Uh, Ted Anders, and, uh, you said, uh, and I repeat, word for word, verbatim, "It's always amazing to me that because government is available, the public comes to government to express themselves. The public fails to realize that everything increases, bread, alcohol, gas, soda pop, milk, and everything else. The first signs of corrupt government is when insinuations are made about people's free speech. Time limits are placed upon the public to express free speech. Citizens of Galt, uh, I'd like to address you a minute. Citizens of Galt's utility rates are inevitably going to go up. What you should question is, is it fair for the citizens of Galt? If and when there is a need to increase utility rates, it must be increased across the board. The city says it needs 4.1% utility rate increase. Then make it fair and make it across the board for everybody. Developers, business, manufacturing also use these services. There's no need, there is no rate increase in other users, and why? I don't see any rate in here increases only to anybody except the citizens of Galt, and I, I don't understand that. This new committee that the mayor is forming, is the citizens of Galt going to be able to go to it and ha- have questions and complaints answered? Uh, if we could have some answers, questions and complaints answered, maybe we wouldn't come up here so much and complain at council like you're trying to eliminate us from doing. To complain about the citizens is contrary to council's oath to serve the people of Galt. Ted, you were hired to serve the city and the citizens of Galt. Who pays your wages? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughterback.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Dick Smith? Right, sorry. You're, you're fine.
Dick Smith, resident of Galt for 15 years. Before I get into my presentation, I'd like to make a couple of observations. The thing that has disturbed me in the last two or three months is I have seen so much criticism of this city council, I mean, everybody up there, by various speakers. I have yet to hear concrete suggestions on speakers as to how we can go ahead and get the city turned around with the problems that we're facing. I'm very disturbed by what's been happening in the past, and it's time that we all started getting together and try to figure out with some good suggestions how we can help out this council. I want to give you a background on PGF, Protect Galt Future. In the spring of 2007, over 30 people met in several separate occasions at the Lutheran Church in Galt to discuss Galt's future and the importance of getting the Delta Greens Project started with, and we talked about many other issues. These were informational meetings and covered a wide range of problems. In attendance, we had Tom Olson, who ran in 2006, Barbara Payne, and Randy Shelton, who were later elected in 2008. In early 2008, we started meeting at Rayleigh's Community Center on Saturdays and began to really focus on what we needed to do to get the project started. On May 5th, 2008, we received our official charter as a qualified PAC, Political Action Committee. Following that date, neither Barbara or Randy attended any of our meetings, even though they were always open to the public. We focused our attention on how we could support Barbara and one other candidate, which turned out to be Randy, without violating the Galt election laws, which allowed us up to $99 support for each candidate, as opposed to the $20,000 that was spent in 2006. During the period up to the election, all of our efforts and expenses were directed towards publishing information to inform Galt residents about the issues. The material allowed the residents to make intelligent decisions regarding candidates to whom they would like to report, to support. This resulted in the election of Barbara and Randy, who supported the Delta Greens Project during the campaign period. The public has spoken, and now Barbara, Randy, and Daryl are carrying through on this commitment to get Delta Greens started. That's nice to see a commitment carried through from our candidates who ran. Our mission is to support positive change for our city that will provide jobs and needed revenues to tackle the city's $400 million capital improvement deficit, often referred to as the city's wishlist. We support the Delta Greens Project and feel this development is the only major quality project that can provide jobs through new business and professional services that would follow the beginning of construction in Delta Greens in order to meet the needs of the Delta Greens residents. Randy and Barbara, Barbara's subsequent support for this worthwhile project for the betterment of the city does not create a conflict of interest. They are merely following through with their campaign promises as the voters expected them to do. I want to repeat that. This is not a conflict of interest. They were following through on their commitments. In fact, it is the duty and responsibility of our public leaders to select and promote the best quality projects that will contribute to the healthy growth of our city. Given major costs associated with developments east of Galt, we all know that, huge costs associated there, Delta Greens is the only viable project that we can see in the future, the next four to five years, to get us over these difficult economic times. Do any of you see anything else out, out there that can help us a lot? Please come forward and tell us about it. We applaud Randy, Barbara, and Daryl for sticking to your convictions and are moving this city forward in a positive direction. We are happy the leadership of this city is in good hands, and we know that you will make good decisions. Our city needs jobs, and Delta Greens can provide jobs. My final comment to Mr. Walters. Get over it, sir, you lost the election. Can you name one item that you or your environmental lobbyist friends have proposed that will bring jobs and income to our city? Thank God our city is now in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
I have no more speaker sheets.
No more speaker sheets, okay. And stamp, agenda items. If you could read those off, please.
Okay, the consent calendar, item number one, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of February 11th and February 17th, and the regular meeting of February 17th. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, approval of the July 4th, 2009 pyrotechnic display. Number four, approval of a diesel truck show. Number five, approval of a statewide paratransit rodeo. Number six, approval of the treasures report, period ending January 2009. Number seven, adoption of ordinance 2009-4, repealing Municipal Code Chapter 5.08 regarding alarm systems. Number eight, which was pulled for discussion, destruction of public records. Number nine, approval of the market grounds, use of the market grounds for a pyro spectacular seminar. And number 10, which was pulled for discussion, or which was pulled, I'm sorry, not for discussion, uh, Galt Joint Union School District MOU after-school program.
Okay.
Andrew? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled item D8, which is the destruction of public records. There was only one item that I had issue with, and that's under the City Manager's office. The dates of these files are 1995 to 1999. Um, the description was City Manager's working files, including correspondence. I would just like to remove that. Everything else I'm okay with destroying, but I think it's important. We've got projects like the Delta Greens Project that were around back in the mid-'90s that there might be, uh, some files from our City Manager at the time that, that might come into play in the future.
I agree with you, because there could be some historical items in there, yeah.
Okay, we can take that one out.
Okay.
The one box.
If council's okay, then I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation with the exception of the item under the City Manager's office, which is the working files, including correspondence.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? No, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If there are none, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And aye, okay. Okay, and then you had an item you wanted to move up?
I, I did.
Okay.
It's, uh, called local preference, and this, I'd like to read the City of Sonoma's policy. It explains it better than I can, and, um... Local businesses make vital contributions to the well-being of the residents of the city of Sonoma. Such contributions include providing employment opportunities, charitable and civic contributions, and tax revenue to the city for public safety and other services. The patronage of local businesses benefits the economic base of the city as a whole. Government action supporting local business encourages other businesses to locate in the city and keep local businesses in the city. Local businesses are at a competitive disadvantage with businesses from other areas because of their limited size, limited geographic reach, and limited access to resources available in less rural areas. Thus, in order to promote local business activity, uh, which may result in increased benefits to the city and its residents, a 5% preference shall be granted to local vendors in those cities' purchases requiring competitive bidding. Uh, this means that any qualified local vendor who submitted a bid which was within 5% of the lowest responsible bid may be deemed to be lowest responsible bidder. The, the beginning, the first part of this, the reason for having this local preference, uh, policy is mainly what I wanted to read to you. I think that, um, we want to, um, as a city, city government, we want to set the example. We tell our, our citizens to shop locally, and I think as a city, we need to do so. So what I'd like to ask the council to agree is to have the staff come back with a, a policy that they feel is reasonable, one that we could live with, um, and that would also be legal, where we could, uh, support our local businesses wherever possible.
Uh, any comments from council? I'm sorry, we have, one, our attorney has a comment first.
Oh, well, after the council, I just, I did have some points I wanted to make, Mr. Mayor.
Did you have?
Go ahead.
Nope. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I did want to address this issue of, uh, local preference, and, um, the, the policy that, uh, Vice Mayor Payne read is actually an example of a, of a very good, um, policy. And the reason for that is because it articulates the justification for providing preference to local businesses. There's actually been a little bit of litigation on this particular issue, and as it relates to, um, public works projects, public construction, there's not an opportunity to provide local preference for that, uh, that segment of contracting. Under the other category, which is basically purchasing supplies and goods, uh, there was actually a case out of, out of San Francisco back in 1987, and the court upheld the policy. But what it said is that a preference policy is only permissible if the city council can articulate why local firms are disadvantaged because of doing business within the city limits. And so that's why I think you find some of the information at the front end of that policy. They're being responsive to this particular, uh, decision. So, while I think it is lawful for the city to adopt a local preference policy, the ability to defend it is going to be based upon the strength of the justifications we, we build into that policy.
And I think also, uh, there were several examples, uh, that other cities have, uh, have adopted, and mostly it was for purchasing materials and supplies. It wasn't in any way reflected on the actual bidding process, like with public works. And so that's mainly what I'm aiming this at, is for purchasing locally. And they also had caps on, you know, how much they would, um, allow to give, um, local preference. I think maybe up to $5,000. But there's several examples that I would like to the staff to review and see what they feel is, um, something that we can live with because we are spending taxpayer money and we want to, um, get the best, uh, bang for our buck for our taxpayers. But at the same time, there are so many advantages to dealing business whenever we can with our local businesses. So I'm hoping that, uh, we can come up with a good policy that will be acceptable to everyone. And at the same time, uh, show our businesses that we want to retain you, we want to keep you in our town, and support you in any way that we can legally.
Question for the city attorney. You said that this has been a case that's been litigated. What is the opposition that has arisen to, to this type of a policy?
Well, the, um, the opposition has been, uh, stated in this way, that the, there's a, a public benefit in purchasing supplies at the, the lowest dollar value that is available on the open market.
But where does the opposition originate from in the community? Are there big businesses that step forward and?
Well, the, the, the opposition comes from, from typically from outside of the community. And it's from businesses that would like to, uh, to do business, sell their supplies to, uh, to the city, and feel that, uh, if they have the, the lowest price, that it's in the public's best interest for those supplies to be purchased by the city. And they feel that by having this, uh, preference, whatever the percentage is, is that it's disadvantaging them in their, uh, in their free trade.
The Sonoma case study that the vice mayor refers to, has it been litigated?
Um, no, it has, has not.
Okay. And I'm comfortable sending it back to staff for recommendation.
Well, how about this, we direct it to Ted, 'cause I don't know with Ted if you have a comment or anything. I thought you were trying to get my attention here, just so I could go, so, every time, when everyone else was.
Uh, I've been through a couple of these, I think there's-
I agree with you, yeah.
I, I think there's some other issues that you have to look at. I, I think that, um, volume plays a part in it, um, whether it's emergency need, uh, whether it's something that you may need quickly. I think there may be some level to where we could say, yes, we would like to help something locally, but what we cannot do is we can't, uh, disadvantage the taxpayers by if we can purchase huge bulks to save a lot of money. And it would be defeating to try and, and, and give a preference on that. But I think there may be a range, uh, to where we could do that. And the other thing that we need to do as a staff is we need to try and identify to the best of our ability what types of things locally that we could purchase that would even apply. And so I think we will look at that and then make some recommendations back.
Could, could I comment to Ted's comment and to the city attorney?
Sure.
Would the proposed language be will or may leaving that discretion open after review?
Yeah.
I, I would say that would be something the staff, uh, would, would look at and come back in their recommendation for the progress.
I would think if the language was maybe deemed competitive, that gives what Ted was talking about, if he has that kind of issue, gives them the flexibility to make that call.
That's a good point, well.
And you'll be working with the attorney, Ted, apparently, so. Okay.
'Cause I certainly support the spirit of what Barbara's proposing.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're all in concurrence. You just need direction, or?
This would just be a consensus matter.
Right.
So.
I think we have adequate direction unless manager.
Oh, we'll be okay. We'll bring you something back to consider.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize you were, okay.
Thank you, council.
Uh, the next item we had was, uh, a presentation. Sacramento Yellow, Sac- uh, mosquito and vector control, uh, the activities around the Galt area, and, uh, Mr. David Brown, which is a district manager. Yes, we had a nice conversation a week or two ago, and appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members. Um, my name is David Brown. I'm the manager of the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. Um, our district is responsible for the control of mosquitoes and other vectors throughout both Sacramento and Yolo County. So we cover approximately, uh, 2,000 square miles when we do our duties. Uh, those 2,000 square miles encompass, of course, of course, both counties, both Sacramento and Yolo, and then the 11 incorporated cities within. Um, how we do that is, uh, gen- well, I, I guess I should back up. Every, I think everybody knows what a mosquito is. I'm often asked, what's a vector? And a vector, at least as defined under the California Health and Safety Code, is a transmitter of a pathogen. So ticks are vectors, uh, which we have a surveillance program because ticks can pick up, uh, an agent from something else and then transmit it. Mosquitoes, of course, are as well. Um, we control these mosquitoes, um, generally through the, the practices, practices of integrated pest management, which means we have a very extensive surveillance program so we can identify where the mosquitoes are, as well as the risks those mosquitoes may pose, and then take corrective measures. And those measures will include, uh, reducing the water site, because all mosquitoes require water. And I, I guess I should back up again. It's only the female mosquitoes that bite. It's only the, the, the female mosquito that lays their eggs in the water. Uh, those mosquitoes emerge in about seven to 10 days. Um, they, they'll take a blood meal. Uh, that blood meal, then, depending on where they get that blood meal, provides the opportunity of passing on a pathogen such as West Nile virus, and I'll get to that a little bit later. Um, but what we do is we'll try to modify those water sources by either draining or eliminating the water sites, uh, providing a biological agent such as mosquito fish. And we have our compound in Elk Grove, where we raise anywhere from 4,000 to 8,000 pounds of mosquito fish a year. We'll do larva sighting activities where we target the larval mosquito, which is in the aquatic stage. Or lastly, if we do see some high risk with adult mosquito populations, we'll perform adult mosquito control, and that often involves spraying, because there's no other known way. Um, the question was asked of me, what, what are the conditions here in Galt? And I've got to tell you that we, we don't necessarily look at just one area when we do our surveillance program, because we do take care of all of Sacramento and Yolo County. Uh, but we do have some specific challenges that we're going to be facing, not only this year, but I think for a few years to come. Uh, clearly, if I start kind of in our recent time in terms of how is it going to be this year, um, you're probably starting to see some adult mosquitoes flying around now. And generally, those adult mosquitoes that you see now are the ones that actually overwintered as adults. Um, they, they, they emerge in September and October of the previous year, and then they go into a stage of what's called diapause, or kind of like a hibernation. So they stay as female mosquitoes. Um, it's only the females that will live this long. They'll find a nice hiding- They'll find a nice hiding place, they, they'll find a crack, a crevice, they wait through all the weather. And then once the weather warms up to about sixty-five degrees, they emerge. They're, they've already mated because they mated back in the fall before they found their hiding place. And then they actively and aggressively seek a blood meal. Unfortunately, when we get these warm weathers of, say, sixty to sixty-five degrees, generally our human population wants to go out, try and do some yard cleaning. Uh, we tend to just go out and, and, uh, we don't necessarily cover up as well as we could or wear our repellent. So we are the fresh, uh, blood meal, if you will, for many of these aggressive female mosquitoes. Now, why that's a challenge now as well is that we're starting to see some very late rains this time of year. Uh, and when you couple late rains during this time of year with warm weather, the combination of having available water sites so the female mosquitoes can lay their eggs, then with warm weather so they can be very active and aggressively seeking blood meals, potentially creates a difficult, a difficult situation for us later on in the year. That's not just, uh, typical of Galt, obviously, it's typical of the entire Sacramento Valley right now. A few of our longer term challenges and some that we've already been having to face and that candidly I anticipate that we're going to have to face over the next couple of years is that, um, everybody reads the papers, we know what's going on with our economy right now, and particularly our, our housing market. Um, the number of foreclosed homes we've seen in the Sacramento Valley, I think, um, for a while, we were certainly in the top ten in the nation in terms of the amount of foreclosed homes that we saw in California, and the Sacramento Valley itself, uh, was up there, um, in terms of the amount of foreclosed homes. How that creates problems for us, of course, is that it seems like almost everybody in California has a swimming pool in their backyard. And once that swimming pool becomes unmaintained, it, it creates a tremendous breeding ground for mosquitoes right in our urban center. Uh, now, we've been working very closely with the city of Galt as well as the other municipalities to see if we can identify those sites. But when it takes a mosquito about seven to eight days during the warm weather months to be able to complete their life cycle, um, we oftentimes don't know when those, uh, pools will be foreclosed until a month or two months after the time. And if you think about the process, that's not unusual because you'll see, uh, when an individual starts to have difficulties with their home or making those payments, they'll stop doing the maintenance for, say, a month. They still have their home. Then the next month, they may not make the payments again, the bank will give them, let's say, one more time. Uh, in that third month, finally, they'll start a foreclosure process. Well, in the meantime, we may have eight or nine generations of mosquitoes coming out that swimming pool. So what we've been asking is seeing if we can't get cooperation from our neighbors, from our community members to help us identify those sites. Because candidly, as a neighbor, you tend to know what's going on within your, within your neighborhood. So we've really been actively and aggressively trying to get the neighbors to help us identify those sites so that we can go out and take corrective measures. In many cases, those corrective measures are applying mosquito fish to the pools so that it remains static. Uh, one area is, a lot of folks say, well, why don't you just drain the pools? Um, but unfortunately, what we find is that in many cases, when you drain a swimming pool, particularly here in the Sacramento Valley, it'll either come out of the ground because in many areas we have a high water table, or you'll get irrigation that will fill it up just enough to where you can't see that there's water in it. But mosquitoes only really need about an inch of water in any type of habitat to be able to complete their life cycle. So we find it's best to put mosquito fish in it, it makes it a static, there's no mosquito larvae because the fish feed on the larvae, until somebody can then maintain the, the pool properly again. Um, these challenges, of course, will be, um, um, even more, um, challenging, if you will, when, um, because of the revenue issues that we're all having to face. And I did meet with the mayor a few weeks ago. Uh, we've been chatting on how we can best integrate the services of both our agencies and your, uh, this city so that we can help identify and collaborate to find out where we can identify these sites and address them before we see the adult mosquito population come, uh, and, and be big. Um, is it going to be a bad West Nile virus year? Because, uh, in many cases, we were, I'll say, an invisible, uh, organization because when we did a good job, um, you weren't being bothered by mosquitoes. And until West Nile virus came, which was prior to, prior to nineteen ninety-nine in New York City, we didn't have West Nile virus at least detected here. We didn't have West Nile virus in California prior to two thousand and three. When West Nile virus came, we started seeing mortality and morbidity in our human population. And of course, then mosquito control became a much more visible aspect of what we do. And then we worked aggressively to try to get information out on what we could do to try to protect people, and then what people could do to protect themselves to try to avoid being bitten by mosquitoes. That's going to remain. Uh, West Nile virus is not going to go away. It's endemic, it will be here forever. Um, we still see, um, peaks and valleys of West Nile virus activity in our bird population. We still have very susceptible bird populations here in our area, and we're going to count on our citizens to help us identify those areas by still calling in, uh, undead birds. Uh, the crows, the magpies, the jays, they're very susceptible. When they contract West Nile virus, they die. Um, if we can get a early warning on that, we can go out and try and identify any mosquito populations that may be in that area and try and reduce that population before it spills over into our human population. And, and lastly, before, and I'll, I'll be here to answer any questions. But lastly, I know the city will be making, uh, considering appointments in, in future meetings. Uh, those appointments are, are identified and outlined through the California Health and Safety Code, section twenty-two, twenty-two. And I want to read a couple of the sections here. That each person appointed by the city council to be a member of a board of trustees shall be a voter in that city and a resident of that portion of the city that is within the district. It's the intent of the legislature that persons appointed to the boards of trustees have experience, training, and education in fields that will assist in the governance of the districts. And then most importantly, a lot of folks, uh, don't understand this, but when a district makes, or when a, a city or a county makes an appointment, um, the trustee shall exercise their independent judgment on behalf of the interests of the residents, property owners, and the public as a whole. So the representative doesn't necessarily represent just Galt. Certainly, that's a part of the, the equation. But they really need to represent the public health and interests of all of the residents of Sacramento and Yolo County. I think that's why we've been very successful at doing what we do. We've received two Integrated Pest Management Innovator Awards from the Department of, of Public, Department of Pesticide Registration and, and California EPA. We're very proud of those, uh, acknowledgements over the last few years. Uh, and, and we're hopeful to, uh, continue that, uh, forward progress to protect the residents here in both Sacramento and Yolo County and certainly in the residents of Galt. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from council?
I, I have a question for you. I work downtown Sacramento, and you talk about, um, reporting, you know, dead birds and whatnot. It's not uncommon, I mean, I'm, uh, right around N Street, fourth, you know, third, fourth, N Street. It's, I'll be honest with you, it's not uncommon that I go for a walk here on one of my breaks, I run into these dead birds on occasion. I'm just wondering if they ever get reported. Do, do you guys get a lot of calls from the downtown area? Cause.
Uh, well, the short answer is we do get a lot of calls. I, I, obviously, I can't speak to the birds that you're seeing there, but we do get a lot of calls, uh, in the past years. Now, um, it's a challenging situation because certainly right now, um, I mean, nature at times can be harsh and, and during the reproductive cycle or going through winter, uh, you're going to see mortality in, in the bird population. So you may see some dead birds now. Where we're more concerned is during that month when mosquitoes are most active, and that's generally between the months of, say, April through October. Um, we see generally West Nile virus activity amplify when the temperatures warm up above, say, sixty-five degrees at nighttime. Uh, so that tends to be when your daytime temperatures are, you know, high nineties, low one hundreds, and then that continues for a length of time. That's when we tend to see West Nile virus activity increase as well. So this time of year, when you're seeing dead birds, it's not necessarily an issue. If you start seeing dead birds, say, in the April, May, June, uh, we definitely want to know about that. And, and yes, in the downtown area, we have had, uh, uh, folks report birds.
Okay, thank you.
How do you protect the wetlands? I mean, we do have a lot of wetlands around here, and it's something that we want.
Sure.
But how, how do we handle the mosquito issue there?
No, that's a good question because, you know, candidly, um, it wasn't that long ago when we drained an awful lot of the wetlands. And when I say we drained, it was mosquito control and reclamation districts drained those wetlands because we, uh, in many cases, they were identified as, as areas that could, that could, uh, impact public health. Um, and, and I got to tell you, we did a great job when we drained them. We reduced an awful lot of the mosquito populations. Unfortunately, we also had an impact on some very important resources, some endangered species. Um, what we've been trying to do now that in the, um, with the intent on bringing back many of those wetland sites is integrating what we've now learned so that we can try to create those wetland habitats that enhance wildlife habitat, yet reduce mosquito production. Um, we've actually been working with the University of California over the last few years to identify those sites so that we, we can modify and manage those wetland habitats so that they don't necessarily produce the mosquitoes that they used to do in the past. Now, one thing I can tell you that the city of Galt can help me, or help us with is that in many areas, there'll be wetland mitigation. And one of the most frustrating things for us, and I think even for developers or for wetland managers, um, on the other end, is that when a project goes into play, it's just about done, and then we find out about it and we go, you can't do that because you're going to produce a lot of mosquitoes. Um, if we know about it at the front end, we can integrate and incorporate many of the management techniques that'll reduce the mosquito population. But when you find out about it after it's eighty percent done, you tend to come in in an adversarial role. Um, that tends not to make good neighbors, and we'd like to try to avoid that. So one thing that we can get help from is that when these projects come through and you see a wetland project or a mitigation effort coming into play, if you can let our department know about that, we can start working with the engineers so that we can hopefully modify and manage the site so it won't create the mosquitoes that might normally be created in those habitats.
Kirk, can we do that? Is that something we?
I've got a note to double check, and I'm not sure.
We've been, um, I, I can tell you that it has been a, um, with the city of Galt, we've been pretty consistent. And actually, it's been pretty good throughout the, the time frame. It hasn't always been, and I, and that's not anything against the city of Galt. It's been an issue that we've had Sacramento and Yolo County wide. And in many cases, it's simply because there's been such a strong desire. I mean, from the question you posed, um, it was, you know, what are we doing about the wetlands? And in many cases, people are doing their best to try to recreate and bring back the wetlands that we lost. And they forget why they were lost in the first place. All we want to do is make sure, remember it, bring that, bring that science that we can bring into it so that we can try and recreate those wetlands, yet reduce the mosquito populations of the whole.
The last large scale would have been in the northeast area when we did the modification of Dead Man's Gulch. That probably would have been the largest project.
And I believe we did have some input in that, and if, I know we're working on some, uh, measures right now because it's, you know, another important factor is that once you do it, um, you can't walk away from it. There tends to be some management. And I think that's one thing that we're, yeah, maintenance and management that we're doing right now.
I, I did have a question, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what, what luck have you had or, or, um, what has been the process to access these foreclosed homes in order to import the mosquito fish in, in the pools?
Um, that's a good question.
Hand over the fence.
Um, yes and no. It has, um, you know, I mean, it's easy to just say, oh, we, we go into the backyards. You know, candidly, there's been a bit of training from our personnel because a, a foreclosed home seems to suggest, well, it's an empty home, that there's nobody in there, that it's not a problem whatsoever. Uh, what we're finding in some areas, and I, I can't say that we've seen this in Galt, but in other areas of Sacramento County, we've seen that a foreclosed home tends to become a residence for other folks that may not own the home but, uh, uh, may actually create somewhat of an issue for us to be able to get back there and do the work that we want to do. We have a procedure that we follow where we'll bring in local law enforcement agents if we have to so that we can gain access. We do have authority under the California Health and Safety Code, certainly subject to the provisions of the Fourth Amendment, which is, uh, illegal search and seizure. But we do have the authority to go in uninhibited into private property to take care of a mosquito or, or, or any vector breeding site. Uh, we use that, uh, as appropriate, but we also try to do it under cooperation so that we, we don't create any conflicts.
Okay. Uh, Daryl, does he have a comment or question?
No, I think that's laid out well, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thanks. And then we have, uh, Andrew, you have a program you want to present?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give it a second to come up here on the big screen.
You want some of the lights down?
Yeah.
We could probably ask Lieutenant, uh.
I need to wait to change it over. Counting down, hold, and then I'll turn it off.
Excuse me just a minute, I'm going to step up. I'm for this program, okay? I just want to let you know.
Are you connected, somebody have the gavel? I should bring it up. That should do it. Make over the. There it is. Thank you. Well, as many of you know, I talked about this program a couple of months ago. This is a, a prescription discount card program that is offered to the city of Galt through the National League of Cities based on our participation in the National League of Cities. I'm going to lay out how the program's going to work. Residents will be able to pick up a free card at the city clerk's office, or you can actually print one online at www.caremarks.com backslash NLC. Cardholders will present their cards at participating pharmacies, including our local Rayleigh's, Long's, and Valley pharmacies, and valleys located on C Street and downtown. Cardholders see an average savings of twenty percent on prescriptions that are not covered by your insurance. Cardholders, cardholders can also use the card to receive discounts on mail order prescriptions through Caremark. All Galt residents will be eligible for this program regardless of age, sex, pre-existing health conditions, insurance coverage, income criteria, et cetera. The program is one hundred percent free for Galt residents, and it's also one hundred percent free for the city of Galt. We're not paying printing fees for the, uh, campaign materials, and we're not paying printing fees for the cards. Like I said, this program is brought to Galt in collaboration with the National League of Cities. This is what the Galt card is going to look like. You can see that this is a fold-up card that you will carry in your wallet. You'll have to present it at the time of purchase, or you'll have to give the card number if you're making purchases online or through the mail order catalog. The program launch date is currently set for March twenty-sixth of this year. This is set by Caremark and the National League of Cities. And they've informed us that barring any unforeseen issues with printing, these cards will be available by the twenty-sixth, and we will have them posted in the city clerk's office. In order to get the word out, I'll be sending out a press release leading up to our launch date once we're sure that we're going to get the cards on time to get the word out to Galt residents about the program. In addition, information about the program will be included in our next city council newsletter, our city newsletter. On March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Councilman Haynes and I will be making the rounds at our local senior centers and mobile home parks to hand out cards to interested residents. And this is the contact info for more information. You can call me at two oh nine three two seven four five nine nine. You can visit www.nlc.org. There's a great spread on this program and the cities that are currently using it across the country. Or you can watch for more information in our local papers. That's the end of my presentation. I also wanted to show the community what these posters are going to look like that you're going to see posted around town. You can see it kind of, it lays out the program highlights. The program includes average savings of twenty percent, free enrollment, coverage for all family members, no limit on how many times you can use the card, no age requirements, no income restrictions, and easy access, does nine out of ten pharmacies nationwide participate. And like I said, all three pharmacies in the city of Galt participate. And that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. So really, the only thing that I had on as an action item is to allow our city clerk to post a snippet about this in our next city newsletter that goes out to the community.
Good idea.
Have a question.
You have a question?
I do. Andrew, in, uh, our packet, it talks about, um, a program administrator that says, um, the program administrator may obtain fees or rebates from manufacturers and/or pharmacies based on your prescription drug purchases. These fees or rebates may be retained by the program administrator or shared with you and/or your pharmacy. Would we have a program administrator designated, or how does that work?
The program administrator is Caremark, CBS, Caremark. So they're administering the program through the National League of Cities.
So they would get like a, a percentage?
Right, with, with the, uh.
Are they a nonprofit or profit?
Caremark, I believe, is a for-profit corporation.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
No. Did a good job on that, by the way. Thank you. It's really good, and it couldn't come at a better time.
Right, I think staff has.
I've talked with Andrew a little bit, and, uh, I think it's a win-win. If you don't need it, you don't need to do it. If you can get some savings and it would be helpful, it would be available. I see no downside not to at least make it available.
No comments from the community? Mr. Baldwin?
Sounds like, uh, Al Baldwin, uh, living Galt. It sounds like a pretty good program. Uh, I think, uh, CBS is coming in, and they've got their program too. And I thought it was Carmack, but maybe, you know, whatever it was.
Caremark.
Yeah, I thought that was part of them.
They're both the same company, CBS Caremark is the full name.
Okay, so they'll be taking over Long, or they have taken over Long's.
Right.
But, um, since you're including, you haven't said anything about Rite Aid, and I'm guessing they'll be involved in it.
Yeah, they're, they're a member.
Okay, because they're going to hopefully be opening up soon.
Hopefully, it will be.
And, um, also Walmart, you haven't mentioned Walmart. Now, since you're saving.
Can we, can we stop you for a minute? We, we have an announcement. Uh, Rite Aid will open the first part of April. Matter of fact, if you go out past the store, they're actually sta- Matter of fact, if you go out past the store, they're actually stocking the store as we speak.
That's what I heard, but I haven't, you know, the Valley Tractor opened up already.
Walmart actually does participate in the program too. I do. It shows on the National League of Cities websites. It shows you the major retailers that participate, and Walmart is one of them.
Okay, because Walmart gives 50% on some drugs, maybe more. I'm just telling you because I use them once in a while, because it's kind of expensive to get my drugs, you know? I got to get my fix here. But I think it's a great program, and the more to get involved, the better. I wish the city got something out of it, maybe a kickback or something, wouldn't it be nice?
Al, you might want to choose your words wisely. I mean, we have the chiefs kind of behind you there, I mean, you know.
Well, he's risked me once. I don't know if he's going to do it again, you know? I mean, I got to watch myself when I walk in here. Anyway, I think it's a great idea, and I think it'll be good to... It'll need to be explained to a lot of the seniors, I'll tell you now, because they're having a problem with just figuring out what Medicare covers. So it will be a good program, I'm sure.
And it's part of handing them out and going door-to-door and explaining to them, and so that they get the card, but they also have an opportunity to ask questions and get answers.
If they have insurance...
They have insurance, this card will not take the place of your insurance. It doesn't give your insurance company a discount. This would really only be for prescriptions for families that don't have insurance, or they have insurance that doesn't cover certain prescriptions.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll double check.
Okay, very good then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you need direction?
I think we...
I think we all agree, but I don't know if we actually need to vote on it.
Liz, when is the next city newsletter going out?
Actually, it's going out the first week in April.
Okay, do we have time to make it in?
Yes.
Fantastic. So is it okay with the rest of the council that we include a snippet about the program?
Absolutely.
I agree. Darrell? We don't want to leave you out, Darrell, are you sleeping?
No, that's fine with me.
Yes, what's your place?
Sure. Mr. Locke is gone.
Is he gone?
Yeah, he left with his wife.
Okay, well, we'll give him a call, okay?
Apologize to him.
Apologize to him, sorry. Okay, and then communications, I believe. Andrew, you had something?
I just had one. I had a resident send me a copy of an, of a article that was published in the Sacramento Bee regarding the regional wastewater treatment plant. I don't know if everybody read this. But I know about a year ago, there were a lot of people in the community that thought it might make sense to connect to the regional sewer plant. And it says in this article in the Sacramento Bee that the district is estimating that treatment plant upgrades could cost as much as $1 billion to remove ammonia from their wastewater, which will require household sewer rates to triple to $90 a month. So those of you that don't think that we have a great deal with having our own water treatment plant, you guys really need to check out this article in the Sacramento Bee. Thank you.
So scheduled matters, none, ordinances, regular calendar, city attorney's office?
Procedures for city council meeting review of resolution number 2002-104.
Mr. Mayor and council members, back in January, the council had asked me to take a look at the existing city council procedures and to come back with recommendations. And I did take a look at the procedures. And in conjunction with doing that, I also looked around at what some other cities have adopted. And I actually found some very amazing examples. There's very broad range between the types of policies and procedures that various bodies have adopted. But what became very apparent to me is that a lot of the, a lot of the decisions relating to the content of those policies and procedures really are better made by the city council. And I felt a little bit uncomfortable picking which policies might be best suited for the, for this body and bringing them forth. So I thought what might be a better approach was, would be for the city council to form a subcommittee, and then with, with my assistance, to look at some examples of different policies and procedures from different cities, and to look at what is existing for the city council of Galt, and then to come back to the body with recommendations at that point in time. So I just wanted to bring back that suggestion to you this evening.
Okay.
You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from council?
Do you want to give me an example of some of the policies we're talking about?
I mean, what, I mean, what cities have them, or?
Yeah, what, you know, what cities have policies, more specifically, looking to address.
Well, let's see, I can't... I mean, for example, you know, I, I looked at the city of Mountain View, and their policy, for example, goes beyond just having limited procedural guidelines. They went into what they call the city council code of conduct. It has legal and ethical standards, communication, and then it goes into council meetings. I found in another example, which is a guidebook put out by the city of Olympia in Washington, which is more of procedures, but it also goes into being a resource for, for the city council. I found, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but there's another set of rules called Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which deal with parliamentary procedures. And one of the questions, I think, is out there is whether or not some of the elements of this type of program might be suited for the city of Galt. And, you know, I found, I have examples from Dixon and Santa Cruz that I think have a lot of merit to their, their particular program. So that's kind of where, where I ended my, my research trail. And I know that the policies that, that this body has dates back quite, quite a number of years. And I believe predate any of the members that are on the council right now. And so I thought it might be an appropriate time to peruse some of the other opportunities that are out there. And, you know, the recommendation may be that we don't want to do anything quite as, quite as comprehensive or what we have on our books with minor cleanup is appropriate. And, and that's certainly one option. Another option would be to, to maybe take one of these templates from another city and use that as a, as a, as a base for a more enhanced program. So it doesn't have to turn into a monumental project, but I, I felt that it warranted input from council before a report came back to the full body.
Darrell, any comment?
No, I think it's just good due diligence to just update and review our policies. And if there's things that will make us more efficient and proficient, then I think it'd be a good idea.
The only comment I have is, this is something that, of course, I'm very interested in and would volunteer to be one of the members to work on that.
I have two comments. I don't know if this would include it, but I believe that it would be very important to take it a step further. Because of all the committees and commissioners that we have, and when I obtained copies of those when I first came on, I noticed that the bylaws, they don't seem to be concurrent. You know, they're not all up to date. I mean, we have some of them that are, you know, I'm going to give like three years old to 10 years old since they've been reviewed. And I don't know if that would be fit for this group, a couple of council members and you too, but I believe that it should be so that we're basically kind of running parallel. Any thoughts on that?
I think that's an excellent idea. I think that, you know, once we decide what the procedural standards are going to be for the city council, that we're all better served by just bringing those other commissions and committees into consistency with, with the council procedures as well. So I do think it's an appropriate task to add that to the, to the list.
I'll go by whatever the council will recommend. What I would prefer to see is, and see if Barbara would concur with this. I know that Claire and Haynes have discussed other things. And I would like for them to consider if they would be on, you know, this committee with you. Kind of an ad hoc, I guess, is kind of what you had stated here. I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, you know, but I have one person, and those are my thoughts. I just feel that Darrell and Don, you guys have worked together on other items. And I'm trying to reach across and get one on, one council member on each side.
I'll have to pass at this time. I've got some other things going on with the other commitments. But I appreciate your consideration.
Andrew?
I'll be glad to work with whoever's available.
Just a few comments first, if that's okay. I agree with updating these, these procedures for our meetings as well as the committees. That was a good recommendation, Mr. Mayor. I just, I want to make sure that we don't get into the debate about three minutes versus five minutes again. Those of you that were at our staff meeting, not our staff meeting, on our goal-setting session last week, know that we wasted an hour of our goal-setting arguing about the three minutes versus five minutes, which was very unproductive. So we've already made a decision in regards to that. Was that a public meeting? Anything outside of that, I'm open to look at.
Well, it sounds like I, we have two council members, which would be Barbara Payne and Darrell Claire that are willing to step forward. Is that right?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay.
And I think it would be clear that whatever we came back with would have to be approved by the entire council.
Right.
So if there was anything proposed, not that we're going to bring up something...
Just to avoid, yeah, just to avoid another...
No, we will, I think that's what you were going to add.
You would absolutely have to come back to the full body.
Thank you.
But I thought it'd be more appropriate for a subcommittee of the council to be making that recommendation.
I agree. Okay. Do you have your direction? Do you need a vote? Are you, I think...
No, I think we, we have it...
Kind of unanimous here, so. Next item is the city manager's office.
Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of talk about the federal stimulus package. And we've been looking at some of the document, we've been looking at some of the documentation that's come out. And what Jason has done is he's taken the whole package, and what we've done is pulled out a slideshow to talk about the ones that we think have direct impact on the city at this time. And let's make another comment. A lot of these programs are much further ahead than others. Some have timetables and numbers, others do not. And so you're going to have to handle each one of them as it comes. But what we'd like to do is start and go through the ones that we think pertain to the city. And if you have any questions, this is kind of an informational tool so that you'll know where we're at at this time. But remember, in three weeks or four weeks, it may be entirely different than where it's at right now. So I'll turn it over to Jason.
Okay, the League of California Cities has put together an excellent resource for all local governments in the state, going through the various portions of the stimulus package. It was included in the council's packet, so the council has, has that as well, and the community has access to that as well. Like Ted said, we're going to go through the ones that we think apply to the city the most. There are a lot of provisions that apply to, potentially to residents of Galt or to businesses of Galt, but not necessarily to the city as, as a body. We were not going to address the issues that may be relevant to individuals, but rather things that might be applicable to the city as a whole. We've asked, we asked each department head, we've discussed this in department head meetings, to go through these lists, to find ones that were in their areas of, of experience and expertise, and drill down and make contacts with the federal agencies and state agencies and gather as much information as we could in addition to what was listed in there. So I think we have the most up-to-date information that we can possibly gather. Although, like Ted said, some of these are changing every week. And some of them will let you know, some of them are more concrete than others. Where we know what's going on, and other ones, the guidelines will be coming out over the next couple of months. So we'll go through the list of the things that we felt were applicable to the city. If there are other ones that you, as council members, noticed when you were reading through that, either you had questions on, or you were, you know, wanted to know how this might affect the city that we don't touch on, then you can bring that up as we go through it. We're going to go through, sort of by page numbers. You can see at the top here, it'll have the list of the, the name of the program, and then the page number referenced, and the page number is referenced by the packet that we provided in your, in your agenda packet. That's the League of California City Funding Book page number. So as we go through, you can have something to refer to. The first one is community development block grants. Community development block grant, the city typically receives allocations through the county on an annual basis. Recently, it's been about $200,000 a year. The, the program is used to benefit low and moderate income residents through all kinds of different programs that are available. It is, it is anticipated that, that funds will be distributed based on the same formula that now exists for CDPG, meaning that the county will receive an allocation. Right now, it looks like Sacramento County will receive about $1.5 million. We do not know, and we've been communicating with the county to try to figure out what our share of that is going to be, and they have not been able to tell us how much they're willing to share with us yet.
Really?
So hopefully, we'll know that soon. It'll likely be a relatively small amount. We have $1.5 for the whole county, who are a relatively small percentage of that, of the county's population. But hopefully, we'll get some amount of money out of there that we can put towards certain programs. Some of the things we've identified to this point that either we've used the money for in the past or that we could use it for in the future include things like new sidewalks, road repair, some economic development projects. We put CDPG money this year into the Lincoln Way parking lot project, things like that. A new one that we, that we thought of this year was, we've had a lot of homeowners and so forth that have had a hard time making utility payments. And when they've, when they've missed utility payments, they're required to submit deposits, which has been an issue, not only for the city, because we don't get the revenue, but for the residents. So there may be an opportunity, we're checking with CDPG staff right now, if there, if it would be legal for us to use some of those funds to make, to assist individuals with those deposits. We could have a fund set aside that as long as individuals met the income requirements, they were low-income or modern-income families, that they may be able to access some of those funds to help with deposits and so forth. We don't know yet that that's going to be an eligible expense, but we're looking into that. Did you ever hear back, Kurt, from the county?
The, yes, I did, later this afternoon. And it appears that they don't believe it is an eligible expenditure, but they are going to double check.
Okay, so if we get more information on that, we'll, we'll let you know. There is a, another program that's later on the list that talks about homelessness prevention, that we believe those monies could be used for utility rent payment, utility payments as well as utility deposits. The only problem with that is there's a question of whether the city's going to receive any of that. So we're still looking at ways that we can potentially bring that forward. But again, some of this stuff is still unknown.
Jason, it doesn't sound like we're going to get a huge amount of money, because I made a couple of notes where it refers to an immediate threat to health or welfare of the community. I was thinking of grade separation for, you know, where I live. And also a firehouse on the west side, but it sounds like...
We're talking probably $15,000, $20,000, you know?
So scratch that.
This, this one isn't a big pot of money here.
Be a small firehouse.
But I, but that does bring up a question. Will the fire districts see participating?
Fire districts don't receive CDPG funds, but they have their own pots of money. There's certain things in here that I'm not going to go over because they don't apply to us. But there are certain pots of money that are just for fire districts.
Okay.
So they, they will access those funds separately.
The problem is I'll jump in, and the money is there, but a lot of it, they want you to spend in 90 days. And so you have to have a project ready, sitting there. And obviously, we can't have a grade separation project, have the best project. If we can't have a contract awarded in 90 days, it's not eligible. That's the first go-around.
That's a good point. That's driven a lot of what we've tried to say where we're going to spend the money. It's things that we can do right away. We may have a project that we think is a great thing, but at two or three years down the road, they're not eligible, because you have to have something that's already ready. And things like sidewalks and road repair, we can get those off the ground really quickly. So they're easy for us to do, meeting the requirements of these guidelines. The next one is the next page on your booklet, Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This provides emergency assistance, local governments to acquire and redevelop foreclosed properties. It is going to be a competitive process. The criteria has not yet been established. It's supposed to be established within 75 days, and then applications would be due within 150 days. Basically, this money is used for the city would go out and purchase foreclosed properties, ones that presumably are in deteriorating condition or blighted, and then redevelop them or sell them so that they could be redeveloped. We're working with the company that we have right now that manages our low moderate income program for, you know, home improvements, air conditionings and so forth, to see if they could manage this program for us. And they've indicated they would be interested in helping, helping us with... And they've, uh, indicated they would be interested in helping, helping us with that. So to the extent that we can get some money through this program, we have the opportunity, the ability to go forward and start to purchase some of the, I guess, worst foreclosed homes we have in our community. We don't know how much is gonna be there. We may be able to, you know, um, purchase three or four homes. We're not talking about going through and purchasing hundreds of homes in the community. Um, but if we can, if we can make some difference in looking at the ones that are maybe the worst off, then we can do, make, make a difference.
Under the same program at the county level, there is a census tract that overlaps a portion of the city of Galt and the southwest portion of the city. Um, and county funds would be available in the city limits in that portion of the city. And I've already been in contact with the county. We've sent them lists of properties, or that was two months ago we sent the information to them.
Foreclosed?
On foreclosed homes. Um, so they are, they already have us in the pipeline, um, for the county program, which is in addition to whatever money we can receive locally.
So, again, the criteria still hasn't been developed on this one, but we were gonna, we'll keep, keep the council updated on status of that. Next one is the one I mentioned, the homelessness prevention. Um, use the same funding allocation as CDBG. Could be potentially used for utility payments, um, utility deposits for low mod income families and so forth. Sacramento County's set to receive 2.3 million dollars. This is some, this, this funding source, the county has always received or has received some amount over a number of years. The city has never received a dime of any of these funds. So we don't know if we're eligible for this at all. Um, we've made some, some, uh, questions up with the county to find out, you know, what they're doing with this, if they're gonna make any of it, any of it available to local jurisdictions. And they said, we don't know. They're, they're trying to scramble and figure things out themselves. But unfortunately, a lot of this stuff's coming down to the county and there's not necessarily a requirement that they share with anybody. So sometimes they can choose to just keep it. Um, but we're trying to work with them to see how they plan on distributing some of those funds. So, and this is the one that, um, it looks like statutorily, we are allowed to use these funds for those types of utility payments. This is the only one we could find that you could actually use that for without a question. The CDBG one may be, but there's some question about it. Okay. This one is a little bit more clear. Transit Capital Assistance, and these are funds that are gonna be distributed through SECOG. And they've done a lot of the work, so that's why we have a little bit better understanding of what is going to be happen, happening. It's gonna be distributed using existing five, fifty-three oh seven, fifty-three eleven distribution formulas. The city, right now, it looks like we're gonna receive about $431,000 in funding through this program. It would be used for the, the following areas that I have listed up here. $200,000 for the contract with SCT Link for preventative maintenance repairs and so forth. Two new buses would be purchased. Um, $50,000 for design engineering for a future operation maintenance facility. Another $50,000 for purchase and installation of additional bus shelters. And I think that's a, four additional bus shelters. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah.
So. The next one is another funding source. This is, uh, the Highway Infrastructure one on page eighteen. These are again funds distributed through SECOG using STP formula allocations. There are two different tiers of projects that SECOG, actually, I think, are there three? Three tiers? Or just two? Two tiers of projects that SECOG has identified using input provided by each of the jurisdictions in the SECOG region. Tier one projects are projects that, uh, will be funded. So if you look on here, two tier one projects, they're a hundred percent grant funds. They don't require any local match. Um, they're supposed to be obligated by May twenty-seventh, two thousand nine. That goes to what Greg was saying, which is we have to use the money quickly. And, uh, most of the cities are, have identified, I think what SECOG directed the city to identify is, let's put all the money on road rehab projects, because it's quick. Everybody's got projects. It's an easy thing to do. So our share, based on the formula for that, is $416,000. So we can make some nice, uh, roadway improvements. Um, the second half of that is ADA sidewalk improvements, about $300,000. So, you know, we, we made a lot of progress over the last couple of years with sidewalks. This will be another sizable chunk to fill in some of those missing gaps and, you know, make, make a big difference.
This year, we don't have a sidewalk project in our budget, so we'll be doing another one. Uh, SECOG has to spend fifty percent of the money by May twenty-seventh. And that's why they want us to have these simple, accurate, no, no, must deliver it. Then they get their other half. And so they're not taking any chances not delivering the first half.
Right. And, and the tier two ones kind of fall into stuff that, that may get funded. Either the tier ones fall through or there's additional money that's available. These are things that, that are on the list now for tier two, but there, there, uh, the list is about ten pages long of other cities' lists as well. So the, these, the chances of us receiving funding under these are less than under tier one. So they include things like the Corrigan Boulevard, Twin Cities Road Signal Improvement, Central Interchange, both from the, the tree removal as well as the, the larger project itself. Um, the upgrades at the railroad crossings, safer routes to schools, uh, bike lanes, Corrigan Boulevard meeting landscape and, and so forth. So there's all kinds of things that are on that tier two again. I'm not as optimistic about those, but we're in line in case things, uh, fall through and we can, we can jump in there. The next one is page twenty, and this is Competitive Surface Transportation Programs. This one, we're less certain on how it's going to be distributed. Um, Greg spoke with SECOG staff today and they're unclear about this one as well. They don't know if it's gonna come down through SECOG or through some kind of process where locals and states can apply directly. Um, SECOG is hoping that it'll come through them, but I, I don't think they know yet. And these are, I think, projects that will be a little bit later. They, they, you don't have to obligate it right away. Um, the criteria on this is supposed to be released by May eighteenth of this year. And these are larger grants. So this is the twenty million dollars to three hundred million dollars per grant. They did, it does say that they're gonna have some waivers for smaller cities, so they may have some, some smaller thresholds. But these projects are ones which they say will have a significant impact on the nation, a metropolitan area or a region. So our, our, um, traffic signals, for example, wouldn't qualify here, but maybe our central interchange would. So that's the one project we think maybe, we may be able to slip in and provide some, uh, or receive some competitive funding on this one, whether it's through SECOG or whether we have to apply on our own. We think that one's probably the best bet.
They're gonna take, this is just after the day we had to obligate all the other funds, after the first fifty percent. They're gonna regroup. There's 1.5 million dollars estimated, uh, for this group. And we'll see how much, we got what money first, how well we spent it. Then they'll give us the second round. Uh, we'll, we'll go through the whole process over again. Tier two projects will be the first ones on the list before they open it to additional projects, though.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, next one is the COGS, Community Oriented Policing Services, on page twenty-three of your packet. This is intended to hire or rehire, uh, police officers. And they're hoping to hire about fifty-five hundred police officers nationwide. Grants will be a hundred percent funding for salary benefits. In the past, there's been a local match or other things. This one, there is no local match. It's a hundred percent funding up to three years. The only thing the city has to, um, is required to do is, is keep those officers once to three years is up. Once the grant runs out, you can't just say, okay, we're gonna get, get rid of the police officers. You have to commit to funding them. So we think with our measure, uh, Measure R coming online, that we could possibly get in line for these, these positions. And then we have a great funding source right there to pick up those costs once to three years is, is up. So we think it's a tremendous opportunity for us to get, get some funding early on for some of these positions. It is competitive. Um, the city managers authorized the chief to already submit an application. I think they're due sometime at the end of this month, chief? Yeah, the end of this month. So we're working on putting those together right now. Um, we're just, I think we're gonna apply for three officers and keep our fingers crossed to see if we can get them. So this is a, a, a good program, good opportunity for us. Next one is the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan. This is for, um, clean water grants and loans, construction implementation of measures necessary to address water quality problems. These are, um, things related to our wastewater treatment plant, for example. Um, they are competitive. They're administered through the State Revolving Fund Program. There is a possibility that some of the, the, the amount, the money won't, will be given out not only through loans, but through grants. I think the number we're hearing right now is about thirty percent of the funds could be grants. So that's the good news. Um, we could use, potentially use this money for, um, portions of the upgrade, uh, bypass pipeline, Live Oak Lift Station, or other types of projects like that. The, the downside of what we're hearing right now is that if you've already submitted an application to the State Revolving Fund Loan Program prior to this, that project is not eligible. We've already, we've, we've submitted our application for the State Revolving Fund Loan. I don't know when it was. It's been in the, on their books for a long time now. So, um, it doesn't make any sense to me why they would exclude those types of projects. But right now, that's the word that we're hearing. So we're gonna keep, keep on this one and see if there's an opportunity to either, either use or apply to those projects or maybe identify the other projects that we have not applied, uh, for previously, such as Live Oak Lift Station or other projects we can identify. Uh, four billion dollars nationwide. Not really sure how much is gonna be available locally. Um, that's it. The next one relating to water is the Safe Drinking Water. This is on the water side instead of the wastewater side. Um, assist public water systems in achieving or maintaining compliance with the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act. These also are competitive, very similar through the State Revolving Fund Loan Program. Thirty percent could be used for grants. Uh, these were the first ones that were due as far as the pre-applications. I think they were due last week sometime February twenty-seventh. We submitted three projects, as you can see up there. Golden Heights Water Treatment Facility Phase Three, 1.6 million, uh, water meter installation. Upgrade Phase Two, if the council recall, those were the ones we didn't have the money for, that we were gonna ask the ratepayers to, to pay for. So we put all that money in there and then cost well. So again, this is one of those things, we're gonna keep our fingers crossed. The application's been sent off and we'll see, see how we fare. Two billion dollars available nationwide.
When these were first announced, they were all loans only, so we didn't actively pursue them. Because if you have money to pay back the loan, you have money to do the project. Last minute, they changed up to thirty percent grant. So we scrambled to put these packages together. Uh, and the reason why what, they're not accepting applications that were submitted previously, the whole idea of the stimulus is to create new jobs. If you already have the application, they figure we're already trying to, are gonna do that project. It's already gonna be funded. There are no new jobs created. That's where they've drawn the line. Just like if you have a project out to construction, you can't apply this money for it, 'cause it's already working. Those jobs have already been created. They want everything to be new as of a certain date.
Okay. Uh, next one is the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grants on page thirty-six. The purpose of this is to reduce energy use and fuel, fossil fuel emissions and for improvements in energy efficiency. Uh, this is, the, the Congress passed the Energy Efficiency or Conservation Block Grants. Uh, I don't know when it was, eight months ago, a year ago? And there was a, a line drawn that cities, uh, under thirty-five thousand population were not eligible for that directly. They had to apply through the state. Money would, would be sent down to the state and then the locals that were under thirty-five in population, which Galt is, would have to be, would have to compete for the funds and submit applications up through the state. Um, so this is more money for the same program, essentially. To date, the, um, the state has not released the guidelines as far as public energy could be funded. They say they are waiting for guidance from the, um, Department of Energy. Department of Energy has not released that yet. As soon as that happens, they will modify us of the criteria. They've set up what they're calling Small Cities List Serve. We've, would sign up that list, but they will update us as information becomes available so that we can submit allocation for that. But we now, we're in those guidelines. Type of projects that we could potentially fund using this money is things similar to what, uh, Councilmember Meredith proposed in the past as far as funding, you know, installations on, on individual homes in the community. Uh, programs that would, would apply, energy efficiency conservation, for the city to develop conservation strategies, energy audits, uh, financial incentive programs. We could use the money to install, uh, PV arrays or solar arrays on city buildings, uh, the police station, wherever we want. So there's all kinds of different things that we could potentially use the fun, the money for. Three point two billion dollars nationwide on this program. We don't know how much will be available locally or what the, what the competition will be like until the criteria is released. But again, we're on the list to receive notifications when things are updated, so we will advise the council. That, that's it, as far as the ones that we've identified as, as candidates for city funding. If there are other ones in here that council had questions on, be happy to answer any questions. Um, but we are trying to stay on top of it as much as we can as things change, getting on the list so that we'll, we're notified when things happen. Um, I think the staff has done a good job of, of reaching out and trying to gather the information necessary to make sure we get our share.
Uh, did you ensure that you read all one thousand plus pages of the stimulus package so that we get every benefit we can?
That's good. I have not read that.
I'm not satisfied.
That's what we pay the league to do for us.
You could read that and then compare notes.
Yeah. Let me tell ya.
Jason, there's just one thing that I would, um, mention, and I don't know that there's any, uh, funding for it, but, uh, we've got a number of streets that, uh, need more lighting for safety. Uh, Wendy Health was one. If you, if we ever get any money that would help with that, that would be great.
Okay. We can see if something fits in with that, that project.
Just speaking with the chief about that, looking at some of the crime grants and see if maybe that could be used as a, as a crime finding tactic.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Daryl, do you have any comment?
No, obviously, this is, as they said, changing, you know, probably by the minute, certainly by the hour and day. Uh, we've already done a lot of work at SECOG and most of that's been reported on, on how we are gonna address this.
Right.
And we've already staged, as you heard, a, a series of second and third choices, if you will, as funding becomes available. And as I mentioned at the beginning, I'm here in Washington DC this week to, uh, work with our congressional and senate members on our own city's appropriation requests. But we'll also, of course, be working with Pete Eivich to see what's, what's changing out here, what formulas are gonna be used. And that large amount of money you heard will be lobbying to come through a metropolitan transportation agency like SECOG as opposed to just getting sent to the state, given some concerns we'd have about where that would go if it happened. So, uh, when I get back from this trip, I'll have met with, uh, Boxer and Feinstein's staff and Lundgren's and, uh, be glad to give you a report on what we've learned.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other questions, we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Liz stepped out. I guess that leaves me doing the, did you have a comment? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought one of you wanted to speak.
Open redevelopment, and we'll, we'll support it.
We'll call the row, we'll call the row. Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith? I know he's here. He stepped out. Shelton, here. Any public comment? None? Okay. Information Consent Agenda. Uh, minutes from, minutes of meeting February seventeenth. Uh, that was A, B is redevelopment agency warrants. C is treasurer's report for period ending January two thousand nine. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Nope. Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Now we will adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council.
I'll play the clerk's role, if I understand. She pulled her items, unless she comes in there.
Right. And she may have something when we come back, but we'll go to staff comments.
Uh, Mr. Merritt, Mr. Halliday has a staff comment.
Okay.
Actually, in Liz's absence, I'm going to indicate that the Wastewater Treatment Plant Oversight Committee meeting, normally scheduled for next Tuesday, the tenth, has been rescheduled for the seventeenth. I believe it's going to start about four thirty. You can contact Public Works or the, the clerk's office for more exact information. Also wanted the council to know, we received word this week from Pete Eivich, our lobbyist in Washington, that Congressman Dan Lundgren's office was successful and have placed a $275,000 earmark grant for the city's wastewater treatment plants.
Right.
On the final funding bill. Uh, I believe it has been approved. Uh, it'll take us eleven, twelve months to actually get the money and contact with the EPA. It's spun into the EPA State and Travel Assistance Program. Uh, we'll be looking forward to getting that money and working with them toward, to apply it toward our wastewater treatment plant project.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items. Um, um, I received a phone call from Larry Littleton. His wife has passed away and her funeral will be Saturday. We're going to help with some traffic at the site for the services. And then also, uh, Leonard Walker, who is one of the Walker brothers that we purchased, the Walker.
Right.
Probably he passed away and his, uh, funeral will be next Monday.
So. Okay. Any other comments by staff? If none, we'll go to comments by council members. Vice Mayor Payne, did you have anything else?
Uh, just a couple of things. I wanted to welcome, uh, Guy Rutter tonight. I seen him in the audience with our, uh, Consume This Fire District. Glad to have you here. Uh, also, I went to the Commission on Aging meeting, uh, this past week. And, uh, they talked about, um, high cap services. I have a phone number if anyone's interested in it. Basically, they help, uh, the seniors understand the, the health programs that are available. It's a volunteer service. Uh, again, I have the number and it'll also be available through South County Services. Um, one of the things that's happened with the foreclosures is, uh, some of these, um... One of the things that's happened with the foreclosures is some of these not very nice people have targeted the seniors when they were trying to get them to take loans out. So some of our seniors have, quite a few of our seniors are involved in foreclosures. I think the reason they were targeted was because they had built up a lot of equity. They tend to trust people. And so there is now a senior legal hotline, and they are taking on some of these foreclosures on the seniors, and they've gone to court with several of them. And sometimes just the threat of going to court has backed, backed some of these foreclosures I think that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Daryl, Claire, do you have anything, Daryl?
The one thing I'd add is about the two hundred and seventy-five thousand that Congressman Lundgren was able to get in the bill for us, had a meeting last Thursday with his Deputy Chief of Staff, Peter Tatisi, at the Sacramento offices. And then Peter and I and Pete Eivich and the congressman and staff in Washington DC will be meeting on this Friday to follow up on that. Certainly on behalf of the council and staff and the community, personally thank him again for that. Let's keep our fingers crossed it comes out the other end and is funded and comes soon.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Payne?
Yes, I attended a meeting on AB thirty-two, Global Warming here in Modesto here just recently. It's very interesting. I found it about two months ago, I went to the local government commission meeting, Daryl, you were there. It was very, issue was discussed and it's, basically it's regarding the impact it's going to have on agriculture and other industries. And it's very important to know as much as we can about this because it's, a lot of this cost is going to be passed down to us, to our utilities. I enjoyed it very much because it was very educational. In addition to that, I want to make a comment on our police report. I want to congratulate our police department for doing such an outstanding job in January. They did a total of twenty-six hundred and fifty-two calls for service during that month. And a lot of people get upset, sometimes they get a ticket or, you know, they're upset because, you know, they've run a light and, but just so you know, the month of January, police officers gave four hundred and thirty-six verbal warnings. And that's very impressive. That means a lot of people got a lot of second chances. And I don't know too many communities where people can say that. So, very impressive, my hands off to them. They've done an excellent job. And that's pretty much what I have.
If I could piggyback onto that, I wanted to just say how happy I am to know that we now have the nine-one-one for cell phones. I remember we had an incident in one of our mobile home parks that one of the mobile homes called on fire, and they were trying to reach the police department by calling, or not police, fire department, by calling nine-one-one on their cellphone. And it didn't work, they kept getting highway patrol. So I just wanted to notice that and say I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Meredith?
Just had a couple of announcements for the community. I was reading through the county assessor's office's website a couple weeks ago, and there was a notice on there about informing your residents, your homeowners, to look for companies that are offering to have your home reappraised for a fee. I don't think the, some segments of the community realize that this is a free service that the county will provide to you if you simply call and ask. So really, all this company is doing is playing the middleman and collecting some money for their trouble. So if you get those notices in the mail, I know they've gone out here in town because I've seen a few of them myself, just throw them in the garbage. In a couple weeks, Councilman Payne and myself will be attending the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC. Something that we're going to do this year is carry handwritten letters or suggestions to our senators and our congressmen from this district will be delivering them on Wednesday, which I believe is the eighteenth.
Yes.
At the, at the offices of all of our representatives. So if you want to get a message to our representatives, you can drop it off at the city clerk's office or mail it to City Hall and address it to our city clerk. That's all I've got.
Okay. Did you have anything?
For the next meeting.
I guess we should make sure we have a quorum for the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
March seventeenth.
Okay. Will you be available?
I will be.
Daryl, will you be available seventeenth?
March seventeenth, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I will.
I'll be back here in Washington DC again, so I'll be on the phone.
Telecommunicating, okay.
I have one more comment I want to make earlier that I'd, uh...
Are you going to be available on the seventeenth?
No, 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 I'm not. I'm, I'm sorry, apologize. Are you done with that? You've got a quorum.
Yeah, okay.
No. If you're not here, you don't have a quorum.
We have to have a physical quorum, I think.
We have to physically be here, three of us?
If we have three people via phone, I don't know if that qualifies.
Are you guys going to be telecommuting, both of you?
We, I think we can, yeah. I think the only problem would be, I think we're sharing a room in DC, so can we do that?
My understanding is that they can do it by phone, except that the door has to be open and they have to make it available for anyone to come in if they wish to participate, and it has to be posted on the door.
And we'll go over that with them, but I'm going to read some reminders because I think Steve's trying to find that.
Find that, yeah.
So I'm going to stall here. Just a couple reminders for the next two weeks. On March tenth, there was scheduled to be a wastewater treatment plant upgrade oversight committee meeting. That meeting has been canceled, it has been rescheduled, well, a special meeting has been scheduled for March seventeenth in the same place, City Hall Community Room. Is that correct?
Yes, I covered for you when you're gone. What time though? I didn't know what the time it was. Isn't it four o'clock or four-thirty? Different time.
I just found out it was rescheduled. The normal meeting is at six, so...
I believe it's at four or four-thirty. I said to contact the Clerk's Office or Public Works.
Okay, yeah, anyone can contact the Clerk's Office or Public Works and we'll have that time available. On March eleventh, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting in the council chambers at seven PM. On March twelfth, the Planning Commission meeting at six-thirty in the council chambers, which takes us to our next city council meeting of March seventeenth. I'm done.
Steve?
As it relates to teleconferencing, the Brown Act provides that at least a quorum of the members of the city council must participate from locations within the boundaries of the city.
And we don't have the three here.
No. So you have to have either three members here or three members basically within the jurisdiction.
Right.
The rate increases, is that right?
Yeah. So we will have to...
So we'll have the three members on, is that...
So we won't be able to have a meeting. Is that what you're saying? That's what I understood.
Right.
Which, I would then remind council that we have a continuation of the hearing for the rate increases scheduled for that meeting.
It was for the seventeenth. So what do we need to do tonight if we're not going to have the meeting on the seventeenth?
Continue to the next one beyond that.
Well, if you have a meeting on the seven, if you have a meeting scheduled, a public hearing, and you don't have a, a quorum, then any public hearing matters scheduled for that meeting automatically roll to your next regular meeting.
That's what I thought. Okay. Okay. So then our next council meeting will be...
April seven? April seventh.
April seventh, okay. All right.
Any other issues that we need to worry about?
Well, I would just ask if, if staff is anticipating any issues that we would need to take action on before April seventh.
When do you leave for Washington?
I leave on, I leave on Saturday evening. I think Dawn leaves on Friday. And that will be...
What day of the month?
Looking it up right now. I leave on the fourteenth, and I come back ten o'clock at night on the eighteenth.
You leave on March thirteenth?
Well, I'm actually going to leave twelve.
Well, okay.
So March twelfth, that's this...
A week from Thursday.
Oh, seven April, yeah.
No, I'm sorry, that is this. Yeah, that's right.
A week from Thursday.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Thursday.
I know, we also have the resolution for the hearing of necessity relative to the Wookiee property scheduled for that, the meeting on the seventeenth. We also have a, a public hearing for the environmental documentation on the bypass pipeline, the water contract scheduled for the seventeenth. I believe that can be rolled forward without any, any problems.
What about the Wookiee property?
Um, I think that, I don't have to compare with attorneys, I believe that could, could roll forward. I believe, you know, we call, Public Works has a total of four items, I don't recall the other two. I can look tomorrow and see if there's an issue and let the council know.
Should we have a special meeting before they leave?
You could, or you could have one week after either one.
If we needed to, we'd take your...
Well, you wouldn't be able to move these items that are, we'll get them for a public hearing on the seventeenth to a special meeting.
So you have to take the next...
My question, Steve, would be for the pipeline project award, we've scheduled the meeting, but we haven't had it yet. Would we have to renotice, would it automatically roll forward? We haven't even opened it.
I'm sorry, I don't, maybe we can talk about that later. I don't, I don't know what the project is.
It's the award of the bypass pipeline for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. We're, we're doing the environmental document along concurrent with the award of the construction contract. The hearing for the environmental document has been noticed for the seventeenth.
That's not a hearing, though. That is, it's just an agendized item.
It's not a, not a notice hearing?
Not a notice public hearing. No, you don't, you're not required to do that. I didn't read, I didn't read the notice, but it's not required to be done that way.
Right, we could do it only the night though, because the chambers are taking that. If we...
Unless we...
Unless they go...
Bump.
Right.
You have bumping rights.
We have bumping rights. Well, are we aware of anything that we have to do? I mean, do we need a special meeting, or do you need to call council and get a, if something comes up?
As long as my items would slide to the next regular scheduled meeting, I don't believe Public Works will have a problem, we can make, make it work.